Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, October 20th. I now call this meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, complete a yellow request to speak slip and hand it to the deputy city clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine and raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. As we start off today, we have three ceremonial items. The first, item one, the Living Project Proclamation. I'd like to invite Philip Greel and Drew Diaz.
We need to do a roll call.
Oh, sorry about that. And now we'll take a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom. Thank you. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Present.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine is absent, an excuse.
Mayor Newsom?
Here. As I was saying, sorry about that. Item number one, the Living Project Proclamation. I'd like to invite to the podium Philip Greel and Drew Diaz, founders of the Living Project. Good evening, gentlemen. I would invite you to share a few words about your project.
Absolutely. Well, Philip and I were childhood best friends. We grew up here in San Mateo together. And about a year or two ago, we had a crazy idea.
The crazy idea was we wanted to walk across America. It's just a wild dream that's stuck in our heads. And one day we just decided, you know, if there's a time to do it, it's now. So we took a year off of college to pursue this dream. We documented on our social media called the Living Project. And we raised over $90,000 for the charity Convoy of Hope as we were basically walking home.
Yeah. So Convoy of Hope is a great charity based out of Springfield, Missouri. They help out mostly after disasters, giving out food, water, rebuilding shelters. But they do all types of stuff all around the United States and the world. And we were blessed to find that charity and raise over $90,000 directly to them. And we've actually been in contact with them. They're great people. We hope to fly out there in Missouri and meet some of some of the executives there and see the work that they do in person. And all in all, the walk, it was amazing. We met thousands of amazing generous people that offered us a helping hand, a place to stay, food, water on a hot day, everything across 13 different states in this diverse country. And we learned a lot. We grew, we basically grew up in six months and it was the best experience of our lives.
Congratulations. We're very proud to have you guys be native sons of San Mateo. And I was actually introduced to you guys originally by my teenage daughters who were following you as you went across the country. And special thanks to council member Sverko Guditsky, who wanted to make sure we got you guys in here. I have a proclamation for both of you. Okay. Whereas two fellow 20-year-old Samiteans, Philip Greel and Drew Diaz, embarked on a journey walking across America to raise 80, it says 81, but over $90,000 for disaster relief charity Convoy of Hope. And whereas what began as an inspirational story passed along from a history teacher at Aragon High School, quickly became a reality for these two childhood best friends. And whereas their adventure took them, took off on March 1st, 2025 in Delaware, where they began documenting their expedition and sharing the impact of the Living Project. And whereas the Living Project alongside Convoy of Hope, aimed at providing charity for on-the-ground relief for those communities affected by disastrous situations from the LA wildfires to flooding in Texas. And whereas amidst hardship they faced from extreme weather conditions to long 100-mile stretches of road to sickness and injury, these two continued to persevere and encourage each other to finish their trek across America. Whereas the Living Project reached the hearts of many strangers nationwide, both in person and online, and helped spread the awareness of those communities in need. And whereas after walking across 12 states and 3,604 miles to raise over $90,000 in funds for vulnerable communities, these two Samiteans concluded their expedition on September 13th, 2025 at Francis Beach in Half Moon Bay. Now therefore I, Rob Newsom Jr., the mayor of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire City Council, do hereby commend Philip and Drew's charity walk across America known as the Living Project. And we hope their journey can act as an inspiration for other young community members who aspire to undertake such uplifting journeys. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So in addition to these certificates, which we're going to bring to you in a minute, we have a special guest here, Assemblywoman Pappen, who also is going to be presenting you with a proclamation and certificate. Welcome, Assemblywoman Pappen.
I think I would have watched by the hour that I arrived, but I have not. Well, we've got a nice legislative resolution. I'm Diane Pappen.
Nice to meet you.
Phil, nice to meet you.
Hi, Philip, my name is Greeley.
Greeley.
Greeley. I want to make sure I got it right. Okay, so I've got just a few remarks. Thank you. Good evening, council. So nice to be with you. So many fond memories in this chamber. It went late into the evening. I don't even remember starting on time. How dare you? But in any event, it's so lovely to meet you. So I got my start here in the City Council and now I represent this area in the State Assembly up in Sacramento. So I would just like to say first of all, how proud we are of you and your accomplishments from this community. As the mayor mentioned, 3,000 miles is no small feat. How are your feet?
Lot, lot better.
Lot better now. Had time to recover. Good, good, good. So one of the things that, you know, we were sort of struck by as we were thinking about what to say to you both tonight was not only did you chronicle your journey on social media, but what you really documented was the enduring, enduring spirit of the American journey itself. One step, one stranger's kindness, and one act of faith at a time. And that could not be more profound from your hometown. You face blistering heat, storms, and loneliness, and still you pressed on. As Philip and Drew showed us, life is a long road, best traveled with purpose and with people who lift you up along the way, which we really loved hearing about. What began as an idea in a high school classroom right here in San Mateo became something extraordinary. A lesson in resilience, a testament to friendship, and a powerful example of giving back. You remind us that the journey of life isn't just about reaching the destination. It's about who we become along the way. And I think that translates to, in short, the kids are all right. So thank you for all you've done. I have more remarks, but enough said. We couldn't be more proud of you. And with that, we have a wonderful resolution that comes from the State Assembly to honor your endeavors, not only the physical, but the mental and what you meant to a community along the way. So congratulations to.
Thank you so much.
Well, now it just makes me feel sure. I have to stand up on my toes. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Diane, don't go away because we're going to take a photo with the whole council and your proclamation. So hold on one second.
Okay.
Get. All right, once again, Philip Greel and Drew Diaz, everybody. And now for a very special second item. The San Mateo Daily Journal celebrates its 25th anniversary. I would like to invite John Mays, the editor in chief of the Daily Journal, up to say a few words. Welcome, John.
Thank you, Mayor Newsom, honorable counsel. Appreciate your time today and for the proclamation. It's been 25 years, 25 years. I remember when we first started, there was a lot of question whether we would make it. And I guess we did. I think that kind of shows that we made it, hopefully. And, you know, people talk a lot about how we shape the sort of narrative of the city. But I think the city itself has done its part in shaping who I am and who the Daily Journal is as well. And that, you know, it's commitment to service, really. We believe strongly in community service, serving our community as well as we know how. And a lot of that I got from the people who were in this room, whether they're on the council or staff, have a very strong sense of community service. If there's ever any concern in the community, I know that everyone in this room would take that seriously and they would, they would have that person come in and share their concerns and they'd take care of it if they could. And I think that that's a, that's a good shared value that we have. And people talk a lot about the San Mateo way of being able to disagree without being disagreeable. But I think there's more to it than that. I think San Mateo has been able to have an ethos of, you know, every idea is welcome. And I've always felt this way that in San Mateo, in this, in these chambers, that all ideas are welcome here. And if anyone has an idea or has an inkling that they want to serve their community and are willing to put in the work, I think everyone here would pull out a chair and have them at that table and give them the best chair. So I think that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good city to have our headquarters in, to be, to have as my hometown. So I appreciate all of that. And, you know, we made it 25 years. I'd like to make another 25. I'm not sure, I can't really make promises after that, so we'll see how it goes. But thank you. I really appreciate it on behalf of myself and also Daily Journal publisher Jerry Lee and the rest of the staff. Thank you.
Don't go away, John. Don't go away. Come back up. We have a proclamation for you.
You think I would know this by now?
Yeah. If you've never watched a council, I'm just kidding. Proclamation. Whereas the San Mateo Daily Journal has been a trusted and independent source of local news and information since its founding in 2000, serving a vital voice for the residents of San Mateo County. And whereas over the past 25 years, the San Mateo Daily Journal has provided consistent coverage of local government, education, business, arts, culture, and community events, ensuring residents remain informed and engaged in civic life. And whereas the San Mateo Daily Journal demonstrates a steadfast commitment to journalism, offering balanced and reliable reporting that strengthens transparency and fosters trust between the public and its institutions. And whereas the San Mateo Daily Journal highlights the stories, achievements, and challenges of our diverse community, amplifying local voices and celebrating the people who make San Mateo County a vibrant place to live, work, and thrive. And whereas editor John Mays and owner Jerry Lee have demonstrated steadfast dedication and visionary leadership, ensuring the San Mateo Daily Journal remains a trusted source of local news. And whereas the San Mateo Daily Journal dedication to public service through accurate, timely, and community-focused journalism exemplifies the vital role of a free press in preserving democracy and civic engagement. And whereas the 25th anniversary of the San Mateo Daily Journal is a milestone that not only reflects its endurance and resiliency in a changing media landscape, but also its invaluable contributions to the San Mateo County community. Now therefore I, Robert Newsom Jr., the mayor of San Mateo, and on behalf of the entire San Mateo City Council, do hereby recognize the San Mateo Daily Journal's 25th anniversary. And I applaud the outstanding service they provided to our residents. We look forward to the contributions they will make for the next 25 years. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And now we'll come up and take a photo.
So hang tight. Might even be in the paper.
Our third and final ceremonial item for tonight is the San Mateo United Home Owners or Home Maintenance Awards. I would like to invite Thomas Morgan from San Mateo United Home Maintenance Awards to come up and share a words and a few present, and a brief presentation. Welcome, Thomas.
If I could go ahead and ask the neighborhood representatives and the award winners to go ahead and line up to my right before I start. And just to give a little background on SMU, San Mateo United. We are the umbrella organization for all the homeowners associations and neighbor, neighborhood associations representing virtually every neighborhood in San Mateo. We meet usually the third Thursday of the month at the Senior Center on Alameda, except for August and December when we take a break. And this is a tradition that's been going on since President Emeritus Anacure led the organization. And everybody in San Mateo does such a great job to ensure San Mateo is a great place to live, work, and play. And this is an opportunity to just recognize a few of the neighborhoods and the people who make that San Mateo so special. And let's go ahead and advance the slide to the first neighborhood and winner of the 2025 Home Maintenance Award. From Central Neighborhood, we have Joanne Cleanman, who unfortunately couldn't be here. So could Ms. Prager come up and accept the award on her behalf? Yes, I could so.
Oh.
Yep.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
And then did you want to say anything on behalf of the homeowner or the central neighborhood? Okay.
Joanne couldn't be here because of illness. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And that's a great neighborhood. Enjoy. That's right on the border between Sunny Bray and Central. So. Next slide. Next homeowner is up in Chigorlov and this is off the 92 and around Deans area. Unfortunately, I've received news that these, the homeowners couldn't be with us this evening due to health issues as well. Bob Kiss, are you available to accept the award on their behalf? And did you want to say anything or is there anything in particular the homeowners out of with their home?
They just renovated in the last year on the exterior and the landscape and also they're very proud of it, but unfortunately could not be here tonight.
Thank you very much. Next is Baywood. We have Chris and Kate Jaffe, who are the winners for Baywood.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
And it's my understanding that you purchased your house and did a major renovation. Was there any details you want to share about renovation?
Yes, we purchased our house in the middle of COVID, actually. And then it's been a long journey of renovation, both inside and outside. But we've been thrilled with it and a lot of that credit goes to the vision of Hiobasca from Vtech Landscaping, who's been our partner for multiple years on this project. So thank you very much.
Congratulations. And the final neighborhood that submitted a nominee this year is Beersford. Venn and Jason, if you wanted to come up. Thank you. And if everybody would come up and gather together so we could take a picture as a group.
All right, group shot. Everybody come back and show you all your. Oh, yes, sorry. All council members, please come down.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we are now moving beyond the ceremonial portion of tonight's meeting, which includes the business items being considered by the council. For that reason, I would like to remind all in the room and online that we will be enforcing our rules of decorum. As such, we do not allow for cheering, jeering, or booing during the business portion of the meeting as this tends to put a chill on public comment. Our goal is to ensure that all perspectives are heard. Our motto is give respect, get respect, and we appreciate your cooperation with this. Deputy City Clerk, can you please read the consent calendar?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number four, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number five, San Mateo Police Officers Association Memorandum of Understanding Amendment. Item number six, Animal Control Amendments Ordnance Adoption. Item number seven, Burn State Crisis Intervention Grant Award and Backfill CSO Position, Approval and Budget Appropriation. Item number eight, 365 Second Avenue Lease Amendment. Item number nine, Personal Computer Replacements Adoption. Item number 10, Mapping Software Enterprise Agreement. And finally, item number 11, Clean Water Program Management Services Amendment.
Thank you, Deputy Clerk. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar items? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only.
If you wish to speak on this item and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you are in person, please provide me with the request to speak. We will now be closing the request to speak period and announcing, and we have zero request to speak.
Thank you. Are there anyone on the council that wants to make any comment? Okay, is there a motion from the council to approve the consent calendar?
So moved?
Second. Ms. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fernandez?
Aye.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Sverko Guditsky?
Yes.
Motion carries by 4-0.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could I make a course, please? Thank you. I would.
I would just like to make a comment on item number seven, the Burn State Crisis Intervention Grant Award and Backfill CSO Position. This is a really important thing for our community. This is an example of how our staff is going out and finding grants that are really going to help the community. In this case, it's going to allow us to have an additional full-time equivalent community service officer position. And they're going to help with the community, help with the education of the, of the community on drugs and also fentanyl. And it's something that really community service officers are the ones who are out in the community every day. So the fact that staff was able to get this grant money, I think, is just a great testimony.
Indeed, fantastic news. Okay, we will now move on. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the city council at this time. State law prevents council from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. The public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to council's discretion and can be extended if council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may also be provided later in the agenda. Deputy Clerk, can you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. We have received a number of requests to speak. If you do wish to speak on this item and you are participant or in the public comment, if you are participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you are in person, please provide me with your request to speak. We'll be closing the request to speak period and announcing the names of our final speakers. Mayor Newsom, we have total of five requests to speak on this item. Per our rules and procedures, that will be, the limit will be three minutes per speaker. Our final speaker in chambers will be Robin Solis Rodriguez. And our final speaker in our virtual environment will be Astrid Barteresian. So I will call up the first three speakers in chambers. That will be Peter Mott, Trina Pierce, and Allison McQueen. To ensure we get to all the public comments in a timely manner, when I, when I call you, please line up to my right. And again, the first person to speak will be Peter Mott.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and Council. My name is Peter Mott. I am the president of On Ice Rinks, which is the parent company of San Mateo On Ice, your local holiday skating rink that we are so proud to bring here every year. And I wanted to take the opportunity to come down and say hello to you and tell you a little bit about what we're doing this year, because this year we celebrate our 10th anniversary here in San Mateo, and we're very proud of that. We work extremely closely with the, the city, particularly Joanne McGreeney and her team at Park and Rec. We have another meeting tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM, so lots to do to get it going. This Saturday, we'll begin construction and we will open the rink on the 14th of November and run through the 11th of January. In those 58 days, we expect to have about 30,000 skaters and another 10 to 15,000 spectators and, and others that, because you can just come in and watch and those who like to just come see what's going on. And while we don't do economic studies specifically, we do do a zip code search of everybody that comes in, and we know that about 30% of those people coming in are from outside of the county of San Mateo. So it's important to us that we're part of the community, part of that downtown community, and try to bring in some of that restaurant business and, and other folks coming in. We work very closely with the Downtown Merchants Association and the Chamber of Commerce. We also work or provide some of the programs we have, we provide extra tickets, both for PAL and for the Boys and Girls Club every year. And this year, we will hold three free skating days where it's absolutely free to come in and skate, because we think it's important that the community has an opportunity to skate, no matter if you're, what your, your economic situation is. A couple of quick events coming up this year. We also are doing pajama party one day. We'll be doing ugly sweater contest. If you'd like to come down and, and participate in that one day. It really is important for us. This is a family-owned business. We live up in the North Bay in Napa, but San Mateo is really our second home and we're so proud to be here and, and support this community. And thank you again for really what is a partnership to us and, and, and the community here that we're really proud of. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Trina Pierce.
Good evening to Mayor and council members. And yes, I am here speaking about none other than 100 parking spaces to be returned on Humboldt Street. And I'm here representing a lot of people that are scared to, a lot of people that are scared to come out and because of ICE. And we know what's going on all over the world. And I understand and I know the San Mateo Police Department is very good. They're not trying to intimidate people. But when ICE comes out, police department can't do anything. It's federal and so, and they know that and they're scared. So I'm here speaking for them again. And I just want to say that North Central residents have been very patient and witnessed so much racism here in San Mateo. Even a lot of people say there's none here, it's here. We hear it when the Daily Journal talks about it. Well, not the Daily Journal, but when they're saying things that people have said. So many privileged people make state statements such as they just want to park in front of their homes. They don't want to park in front of their homes. They want to park at least in the, within the block or a block and a half away. Or they say that they don't park in their garages, you know, because whatever the reason. A lot of these people are older people. They bought the houses. These houses were built in 1930s, 1940s. They don't have the luxury cars people have that beeps at them and tells them how far they are away. And a lot of them have tried to park in their garage and they've hit their mirrors because the garages are small and these, these cars are big. So I really wish people would keep comments to their self, just because they're privileged or, you know, just because they, and a lot of them didn't even make their money. They got their money because they, it was handed down from people that worked hard. So I wish they would really stop downing people when they haven't been in their shoes. So, and these negative thoughts just make North Central residents really upset with the San Mateo, with, you know, the politics that are going on. And I mean, we all witnessed the, the no king protest. And a lot of people were saying how two years ago, two and a half years ago, how we had a mayor that thought he was king and didn't go by what the residents wanted, but what they wanted and the bike coalition wanted. So it's just, it just comes to flare what people are thinking, but they're not going to come out and say it. So, but I appreciate you guys listening to me again, but I will be back. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Allison McQueen. Followed by Robin Solis Rodriguez.
Hi, my name is Allison McQueen. I was a member of the City of San Mateo Safe Routes to School Strategic Plan Committee that met in June of 2024 through December 2024. It was a coalition of DPW employees, SAM Trans employees, school district employees, county safe routes to school employees, San Mateo parents and teachers, safety advocates and crossing guards. A consulting firm paid by the City of San Mateo and the former City of San Mateo Safe Routes to School Coordinator, a position that is no longer funded, helped facilitate the strategic planning sessions. We met for hours each month, had debates and nuanced conversations for how to create safe routes to school in San Mateo. The plan was sent to the city and was to be published in the first half of 2025, but there has been no publication. Meanwhile, there is a letter from the City Councils of San Mateo and Foster City addressed to the San Mateo Foster City School District Public School K through 8 program, asking the district to do several things they already do. Recommendations 1 through 3 in the letter, asking them to do things that are the city's responsibility, items 4 and 6, and a plan for safety captains that will only create bureaucracy and have no real-world impact. Why not listen to the coalition of community members who worked for six months and collected data from real students in San Mateo who told us what would help them walk, bike, and take transit to school safely? Spoiler alert, I've seen the data. The kids are asking for infrastructure, and that is DPW territory, not the school district. You and only you, the City of San Mateo, are responsible for creating safe streets and, and for enforcing the law for all street users. The stats in your letter here are sourced from the internet with no validation. Did you read the studies? The stat about helmet use is invalid per the study's authors, because in 90% of the crashes, the presence or absence of a helmet was not reported. That stat is junk. This letter that has been drafted is a prime example of passing the buck and not doing the hard nuanced work to create safe routes to school. But you hired a consultant and put together a fantastic group of people, including city employees, that actually did the hard nuanced work in 2024 to create a plan. Let's publicize it and act on it. I request if you are serious and concerned about safe routes to school, as I and others are, number one, publish the Safe Routes to School Strategic Plan as promised. Number two, refund the City of San Mateo Safe Routes to School position. Number three, create an action plan to enact the Safe Routes to School Strategic Plan. We took our assignment as committee members seriously. We asked the City of San Mateo to do the same.
Thank you. Our next speaker and final speaker in chambers is Robin Solis Rodriguez.
Good evening, City Council. I'm currently working on a school project, so part of it is I have to ask the council a few questions. So I just like to pose a few questions to the council. First of all, I know there's currently a proposed plan to redevelop the Hillsdale Mall into more affordable housing. I was just wondering what the current status of that plan was. And additionally, within the plan, there's a lot of space allocated to non-commercial office spaces. I was just wondering how this is intended to help solve the overall issue of providing more housing, considering that space could have been used to create more houses. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're not allowed to, sorry, we're not allowed to talk during the public comment period, but I will refer you to city staff and we'll get you someone to answer. So do she have your phone number and email address? Okay, then we will follow up with you. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker in our remote environment is Astrid.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Hello, Mayor Newsom and City Council members. My name is Astrid Barteresian, and I'm coming to you on behalf of the Lory Dale Homeowners Association Board of Directors. Lory Dale is a 328-unit condominium property on George Avenue in San Mateo. I'm reaching out to you for help in dealing with Recology. For some years now, we've been trying to work with Recology on the twice yearly bulky pickups that San Mateo County residents are entitled to. Our understanding, and this is reported on Recology's own website, is that San Mateo residents are offered two yearly bulky item pickups, including for each resident, two cubic yards of garbage, one appliance, one e-waste item, and one mattress. For 328 units, that would equate to 656 cubic yards of garbage alone. Instead, Recology provides us with two 15-cubic-yard bins, replaced once during a week. That amounts to a total of 60 cubic yards or 1/10 of the allotted amount for other San Mateo residents. And this does not even address the mattress and e-waste and appliance items. We have tried to work with Recology to rectify this, and they've been rude and combative, accusing us of overfilling bins and leaving garbage alongside the bins, which is hardly a surprise given the circumstances. This includes a net who is supposed to arrange our twice yearly pickups, who has been rude and unhelpful, and area supervisor Mike Green, who will not return our calls. We pay Recology almost $150,000 a year for garbage service. We're only asking for what we are due as San Mateo residents. I'm asking the council to put me in touch with someone who will help us get Recology to work with us on this injustice, and obviously not the two people I mentioned. They have, we've contacted them many times. I have provided my contact information in an email to the council. I'm sorry, it got in just after four, but it is there. And I'm happy to provide it again here if you don't have it. And we thank you for helping in this matter.
Thank you.
Thank you. And again, we can't comment during public comment, but rest assured, I know someone who represents that district that'll get back to you.
We're going to receive the email and staff a follow-up.
Very good. Thank you.
Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
All right, we will close public comment. We'll now move on to our next item of business. Item number 12, new business. Item 12, 2025 Triannual Building Code Update Ordinance Introduction. It'll be read by Michael Titsworth, Deputy Director and Building Official. Welcome, Mike.
The mayor, can I just make a comment?
Yes.
Quickly. So I know we typically don't address public commenters, but on November 3rd, I believe there is a study session on Hillsdale Reimagine. Correct?
Yes, 7:00 PM, November 3rd, right here in the chambers.
Thank you. Okay, Michael, are you ready? Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and distinguished council members. My name is Michael Titsworth, serving as Deputy Director of Community Development and Building Official. I'm the manager of the Building Division within the Community Development Department. Assisting me tonight in this presentation and code adoption is our Deputy Building Official, Mary Subio. The purpose of this report and presentation tonight is to introduce an ordinance adopting the updated 2025 additions of the California Building Standards Codes. These codes are adopted by reference, along with local amendments, by amending various sections of the City of San Mateo Municipal Code, specifically Title 23, Buildings and Construction. This proposal also includes adoption of a few administrative updates to Chapter 23.44, Electrical Vehicle Charging Stations, and Chapter 2346, Small Residential Rooftop Solar Energy Systems for the administration of these types of permits. Additionally included in this report is the newly created Wildland Urban Interface Code, or WUI Code, as Chapter 23.29. This new WUI Code addresses the increasing risk of wildfire in areas where urban development meets and intermingles with wildland vegetation. And finally, this report includes a resolution containing the expressed findings that the proposed amendments are reasonably necessary based on local climatic, geological, and topographical conditions as required by California Health and Safety Codes. Earlier this year, a prior bill known as AB 306 was moving through the state legislature, attempting to freeze residential building codes for extended periods, which effectively would have limited the ability of jurisdictions to apply updated safety standards at a local level. The current law, AB 130, was approved by the governor June 30th, 2025, as part of the state budget trailer bill package. Being a trailer bill, it took effect immediately upon enactment rather than waiting for the start of the next calendar year. A few of the building code elements from proposed A few of the building code elements from proposed AB 306 were inserted into the enacted bill, AB 130, where they became effective October 1st, 2025. These provisions establish 10-year vesting for approved residential model home designs, as well as setting boundaries for local building code amendments. This immediate applicability is why AB 130 is directly tied to the 2025 triennial code adoption process now before the city. The key distinction between the proposed AB 306 and enacted AB 130 is that AB 130 strikes a balance between predictability for developers and local flexibility to address critical health, safety, and wildfire risks, whereas AB 306 largely blocked local adaptation of residential codes. These proposed local amendments for 2025 are narrow in scope, focusing on seismic safety, fire protection, and energy resilience, consistent with the state's intent and the applicable health and safety codes noted as bulleted points 1, 2, and 3 on the screen. Excuse me. The California Building Standards Codes, also known as state codes, is updated and published in its entirety every three years by order of the California Legislature, with limited supplemental amendments published in intervening years. The state code includes model administrative, building, residential, electrical, mechanical, plumbing, energy, the new WUWE, historical, fire, existing building, green building, and reference standards codes. The 2025 state code becomes effective statewide on January 1, 2026, as published unless local jurisdictions adopt more stringent amendments in accordance with state law. The last local triennial code update was in 2022 and took effect on January 1 of 2023. Reach codes are typically adopted as amendments to the state energy code and green building standards codes. This current recommendation before council does not include any reach code amendments. Those amendments are being developed separately, under the guidance of the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission and the city's sustainability analysts on a different timeline. This presentation and update only covers the triennial code adoption and does not add or change any reach code provisions.
This triennial building code adoption proposal is like most code adoption years. As this building code update is essentially an amendment to reflect the most current version of the model codes, continuation of amendments adopted during previous code adoption cycles, and corrections to specific code sections, we are also adding Section 23.29 for the newly created Wildland Urban Interface Code. Previously adopted revisions needed to meet the 2022 state codes were not particularly burdensome to the building community. The proposed revisions to meet 2025 state codes are also expected to have a minimal impact. These residential code amendments are the continuation of amendments adopted during the previous code adoption cycle. CRC, Chapter 6, wall construction is amended to provide greater seismic design requirements for sheer walls. This amendment aligns with the residential, aligns the residential code with the provisions of the building code. There are three residential code appendices. Appendix BF, patio covers, relaxes certain provisions related to patio covers intended for recreational use not exceeding 12 feet in height. It helps streamline and expedite processing of these types of projects. Appendix BG, sound transmissions, mitigates the sound transmission from other spaces and between dwelling units. This appendix aligns the residential code with the provisions of the building code. Appendix CI, Swimming Pool Safety Act, provides enhanced safety measures for swimming pools and spas in residential settings and aligns the residential code with the provisions found in California Health and Safety Codes and the 2025 California Building Code. The following building code amendments are minor corrections and continuations of amendments adopted during the previous code adoption cycles. CBC, Chapter 15, roof assemblies is amended to provide greater fire resistance of roof coverings in all construction types. CBC, Chapter 17, special inspections are amendment to enhance regional consistency in the application and enforcement of the building code for isolated spread footings. CBC, Chapter 23, wood is amendment to provide greater seismic design requirements in sheer walls. CBC, Section 3109, is amended in this cycle to align the provisions of swimming pools and spas as designated in Chapter 27.70 of the zoning code. CBC, Section 3110, is adopted and amended in this cycle to provide additional safety measures that reduce the risk of death or injury that may result from gates detaching from supporting hardware. Appendix G, flood-resistant construction is needed to ensure local compliance with FEMA requirements with construction features such as raised floors and drainage vents. Not noted in the slide presentation is the continuance of the existing amendment to Section 719 of the Plumbing Code that requires a sewer cleanout to aid in the efficiency of public works' operations.
The newly created Wildland Urban Interface, or WUWE Code, in 23.29, addresses the growing risk of wildfire in areas where urban development meets or intermingles with wildland vegetation. Its purpose is to establish consistent construction and defensible space standards that enhance community resilience and reduce wildfire loss. The new California WUWE Code consolidates provisions that were previously scattered across multiple codes, including California Residential Code, requirements for existent ignition-resistant construction such as roofing, exterior walls, and vents; California Building Code, where they had structural, fire safety, material testing, and performance-based design criteria; and the California Fire Code, where operational standards for defensible space, access, water supply, and vegetation management were. Based on the information provided, staff recommends adopting the 2025 California Building Standards Codes by reference with the local amendments and appendices, the newly created Chapter 23.29 Wildland Urban Interface Code, and the resolution adopting express findings that the amendments to the 2025 state codes are reasonably necessary based on local climatic, geological, or topographical conditions. This concludes our presentation. Thank you for your time and consideration, and we're available to answer any questions.
And we're back. Thank you, Michael and Mary, for a great presentation. Before we go to the council, I will open this to public comment, or the requests for public comment on this matter.
If you do wish to speak on this item, and you are participating in a virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you are in person, please provide me with the request to speak. I will be now closing the request to speak period, and we have zero request to speak.
Okay, then we will close public comment and open it up to questions, comments, and then a motion from the council. Does anyone want to go? Councilmember Diaz Nash.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you, Mike and Mary, for keeping us up to date and keeping us safe, and for everything you do every day just to get, get immunity building. I just had, I'm very supportive of this. Just had two questions. Number one, it mentioned in the AR that Laurelwood, Sugarloaf, and Baywood were the three neighborhoods subject to WUWE rules. Are those the only neighborhoods in San Mateo that are currently subject to those rules?
Yeah, the Fire Department adopted new WUWE maps this last year, and it significantly reduced the amount of area that was in wildland urban interface areas. So right now, I believe there's five blocks in one area and about three blocks in the other. So those are the only ones.
Okay, I would, as part of our ongoing education, this may be also the fire chief being interested in this, to be very specific about which are the neighborhoods within San Mateo that would be subject to this. So the more people can say, oh, it's my street, not somebody else's, the more they'll do something about it. And if there are changes to the WUWE maps, is that only on an annual basis, or how would this get updated?
The Fire Department with Cal Fire, they're the ones that adopt the maps.
So.
We enforce the regulations.
Yep.
Once the maps are approved.
Okay, well then.
Working now?
Yeah.
Okay. The Wildland Interface Maps, they're not, it's not an annual approval. There's a set amount of years in between when they are looked at. Fire chief, you want to speak to this? Here it comes. Chief Tertori.
He's here, we're here, yeah.
Yes. So what I can tell you is, these are, there's constant review every year, regardless of where we live, it's the state of California, based on the weather and fire season. And fire season in California is year-round. Yeah, it is. We don't have a season anymore, it's year-round. So as far as that goes, they are reviewed. This was a long time coming. It was actually delayed multiple times based on a lot of interest at the state level in making sure it was feasible and something that we could accomplish rather easily. The maps are fairly explanatory. As Mike's explaining to you, the reason why we had to change some things is because we had some areas in the San Mateo hills that were designated a high fire danger, and the codes were written to address the high fire danger areas. When they came back through and reassessed those areas, they changed a few of them to moderate, in order to give us the latitude to still conduct the inspections, code enforcement, and make sure that those areas are still safe, we had to change the language to also incorporate moderate. So that's pretty much how that goes. At the end of the day, it's, it is what it is. West of the Alameda, all those areas should fall under this code adoption.
Thank you, chief.
Got it.
Councilmember, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
As Matt said, the previous adoption were very specific as to the type of hazard. And the way it's been written this time is you're either in a hazard zone or you're not.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Fernandez, Councilmember Swir, okay. I guess my only question would be, is there anything that's added that causes, is a cause of concern for either of you?
Almost everything in here was already enacted, as we said, that were in line with the state code. We did add the gate safety, which I did go to a presentation earlier this year. Had a report where a child was unfortunately killed by a gate that had fallen. So the draft ordinance in here requires any kind of gate over a certain size and a certain weight be, have a special provision that it can't fall over. It has to stay up at least 45 degrees. And the means and methods are up to the manufacturer, or the fabricator, or the property owner, on how they accomplish that. So we just don't want it falling over. That's, that's our point.
Seems like a good idea. Well, thank you. Do we have anyone here who would like to make a motion?
I could make a motion.
Go ahead.
I will make a motion to accept the recommendation which was on the screen.
Second. Please call the roll.
Can't turn.
Screen, guys.
Let me, let me, you want me to read it as well?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Adopt a resolution to set forth express findings that amendments to the 2025 Building Standard Codes are reasonably necessary based on local climatic, topographical, and geographical conditions, and introduce an ordinance to amend San Mateo Municipal Code, Chapter 23, Building and Construction, to adopt the 2025 Building Standards Code by reference with local amendments, amend various sections of the San Mateo Municipal Code, Title 23, Building and Construction, update procedural language, and revise miscellaneous sections. Add Chapter 23.29 Wildland Urban Interface Code. And we have a motion and a second. If we could please call roll.
Certainly, Mayor. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Srikha Goditsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you. Okay, next up, will you? Okay, mics are acting up a little. We're apologizing for that. Item number 13, Old Business, Establish the Civic Arts Committee as a Standing Commission, Ordinance Introduction. We'll have a presentation by Jennifer Rojas, Rosas, rather, the business manager. Welcome, Jennifer.
Okay, I was able to reach the mic. Hello, Mayor Newsom and council members. I'm Jennifer Rosas. I'm the business manager for the Community Development Department, and it's my pleasure to be here this evening to present this ordinance introduction for the Civic Arts Committee. The Civic Arts Committee was formed in 2008 as a special advisory committee to the city council to help support the Art in Public Places program. And when it was formed, it was formed with a strict requirement for the appointed seats. As it is subject to Section 6.09 of the city charter, the Civic Arts Committee has been renewed every two years since it was established. Earlier this year, on March 3rd, the city council directed staff to bring the Civic Arts Committee appointment process and term limits into alignment with the other city boards and commissions. Here we have some of the recent artwork that came to the Civic Arts Committee for review. You'll see on the left, we have the Racial Equity Art Mural, which is in the downtown pedestrian mall on B Street. The selection of an artist and the design went to the Civic Arts Committee for review, and the funding for the mural was through the Art in Public Places Fund. On the top right, we have the Kikui Crossing artwork, and that is representative of a lot of the artwork that comes to the Civic Arts Committee for review. They review all artwork that is proposed for new commercial development projects. And then on the bottom right, we have the Remembrance Poppy for the Fallen Heroes Art Memorial in Central Park. This artwork did come to the committee for review and was partially funded by the Art in Public Places Fund. The Civic Arts Committee has demonstrated that it does serve an ongoing function to support the Art in Public Places program, and to implement term limits and change the appointment process requires changing the Civic Civic Arts Committee to a standing commission. So a new section under Title 2 of the municipal code may be established to create the standing Civic Arts Commission, and sections of Chapter 23.60 must be updated to reflect the name change and to remove references to the required composition of the appointed seats. Currently, the commission composition is listed, as you can see. It's required that there be one Chamber of Commerce representative, one architect representative, one professional artist representative, planning commission representative, and a representative from City Arts of San Mateo. Per the new Section 2.22, the composition requirements will be just five members appointed by the city council with standard term limits, and only a priority for applicants who display an interest in and appreciation of art, architecture, and local businesses, or the broader art Staff's recommendation is to introduce an ordinance to add San Mateo Municipal Code, Chapter 2.22, and amend Chapter 23.60 to update the Civic Arts Committee to be a standing city commission, and change the name to the Civic Arts Commission. Adoption would be scheduled for the next regularly scheduled city council meeting and go into effect 30 days after that. This would ensure that in the coming spring, the recruitment process for all boards and commissions would include the Civic Arts Commission. And that's it for the presentation. I'm happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you for your presentation. Before we move on to council comment, do we have anyone who wants to make public comment
If you do wish to speak on this item, and you're participating in our virtual environment, please raise your hand now. If you are here in person and you wish to participate in this item, please turn in your request to speak. We currently do not have any requests to speak today.
Wow, okay. A little surprised. All right, we will open it up for council comments. Does anybody, okay, councilmembers? Mic's not working, there you go.
I just want to check one thing. This commission, do they have a set of guidelines or criteria in terms of how they determine what art is put up or shared? Or committee, excuse me.
That's all right. There is no specific set of guidelines, other than what is already established in the code. And so they are required to review any new artwork that is being developed for any new commercial developments, and any commercial development that does not wish to develop artwork for their site may pay into the Art in Public Places Fund. Some of the criteria that is considered, but is not strictly written into any guideline, is, is it properly lit? Is the artwork being placed in a location where the public does have access to review, to view the art? Once it's complete, they'll also consider items such as, is it susceptible to graffiti? But other than that, there's no strict written guideline.
And historically, how often does this committee meet right now?
Our regular schedule is to meet every other second Monday of the month. There have been canceled meetings when there are no art items or administrative items to review.
And is part of the reason that we're looking to establish this as a commission? Because we're seeing an influx of housing requests, so we anticipate that there'll be more funding in this area, or more projects added here?
Part of the reason why this change is being considered is that the committee was established as a special advisory committee. Special advisory committees are limited to a maximum term of two years, but can be renewed every two years for up to that length of time. This committee has been a standing advisory committee since 2008, and so there is a demonstrated need for it to be an ongoing commission, not just a special advisory committee. There is the understanding that we should have a lot more new developments, and therefore new artwork proposals coming soon, with new developments that are going through the application process. But that is not necessarily what initiated this change.
So, so I can just jump in here. So in March of this year, this council gave direction to staff to go ahead and bring back this item. And it all, really, the impetus of this was that there are no term limits for this committee. And so in order to establish term limits and formalize this committee into a commission, that's why the item is here this evening before the council.
Thank you. Well, I am supportive of a civic arts commission, so I want to be clear. I guess where I'm coming from is, I would like to see this commission lean in and do more, if we can. Like, for example, if we can find ways to partner with the schools to, you know, put up, you know, student artwork, or with the universities to do more displays. So that's why I'm asking about, what are the guidelines and rules of this commission?
So noted, so take that feedback in. One of the areas typically that you would look at just with overall city art is having a strategy, actually. And so having an art, basically, public art policy overall. That is something that I believe, and I'm going to look to our community development director here, that is part of our general plan as a future policy initiative. Correct me if I'm wrong, Zach? Nope, he's, he's nodding yes. So that is, that is future work for this commission.
Great, okay, thank you.
Just building on that one, so right now, the commission, soon to, committee, potentially commissions, main charter is to administer the Art in Public Places program. It's a little bit more focused than that in the sense that it's really, it's new development projects that have a public art piece, and so they'll review it. Or if there's public art that is utilizing the funds in, that come from that Art in Public Places Fund. It could be broader, the way we've structured the ordinance is this is the starting place, but it's also an additional direction or that's provided by council. So if there are future initiatives, that could definitely be folded into their workload.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I was wondering, as we are already thinking about establishing a civic arts commission, which is currently a committee, I always like to look at things through the lens of where we can integrate young people. Is this a, the commission where we could add a youth commissioner that we could appoint in line with the other commissioners in June of next year?
Absolutely.
That's it, thank you.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Thank you, Jennifer. And as the liaison to the Civic Arts Committee, I am very supportive of turning it into a commission. And I know the committee members were also very supportive in the meeting that I attended. I'm also supportive of councilmember Fernandez's suggestion about adding a youth commissioner. And I'm in violent agreement with councilmember Shrek Goditski, that this commission needs to play a proactive, loud voice in the development of what is the role of art in our city. I know that it's a big lift and has to be timed appropriately, but given the fact that we have a general plan, we're going to be doing a downtown-specific plan, and art can have such a huge impact on who we are as a city. And I know from my time on the library board before I was on council, there was someone offered to donate a piece of sculpture and to the library, it came to the Civic Arts Committee. And ultimately, the committee recommended that it not, not be accepted because it wasn't in keeping with what was appropriate at the time. So I think it was more of a, of a feeling of what's right and wrong, but I think getting more specific is a great idea. I also would love to see the, the, the members, that it was a very general recommendation as to who is on the committee or commission, that they're interested in art. I would like to see emphasis on people bringing technical skills and background. You know, artists, architects, landscape designers, people who really have the skills to be able to comment. Obviously, general members of the committee, or community, excuse me, also welcome, but just having people who are interested, I don't think will give this commission the heft I think it really needs as we go forward, but I am very supportive of it.
Thank you. I think I echo everyone's sentiment. I am also in support of this move. Few things I would like to call out. One, I would like to see going forward that we make sure we have a maintenance plan in place for art projects and art installations, whether that be replacing or repairing them. An example of this is the historical downtown San Mateo mural. I was down there on a tour of the historical buildings last month, and the mural's in bad shape. And I looked at it and thought, well, who's responsible for replacing that? And I said, oh, probably we are. So figuring out ways to make sure we have funding to maintain artwork and then replace it if it ages out.
I just want to, I'm just sorry to interrupt, but it's more complex than that regarding that mural. If staff could just go and be able to do that, that we have.
Yeah.
Issues of the property owners, I just want to put that in the record.
Yep, I'm, I'm talking more broad, I use it as an example, but I'm talking more broad picture of, we've also had, in my neighborhood in particular, a lot of interest in doing small projects like utility boxes and fire hydrants. So I think there's an interest in that, and I think that this commission should be spearheading that. So with that, I support this change, and I support, obviously, having a public arts policy developed and youth commissioners as well. So does anyone want to make a motion?
Before you make a motion, if I can just interject, so did you want to amend the ordinance right now to add the concept of youth commissioners? Or did you want, you did? Okay.
Yes, sure.
So we can do that, I think it's sufficiently noticed, and we've done, we've, the council has included language around youth commissioners and a couple of other contexts. So for example, with the Park and Recreation Commission, the council included language indicating that in addition to the regular five members, you would have two non-voting youth advisory members who are at least 13 years old, no more than 17, the time of appointment. And they would provide written documentation of parental or guardian consent to be considered for appointment. And they would serve, remember, because they're not, they wouldn't be considered voting members of the commission, they would serve only an advisory capacity, and they wouldn't count towards a quorum. And then each youth commissioner would serve, it's the pleasure of the council, I'm reading all of this, because like, I'm just repeating, making it clear what the council would be adopting, so that unlike regular members of the arts commission, youth commissioners would serve at the pleasure of the council, similar to regular, to arts commissioners, but only for a term of one year, until the appointment qualification of a successor. And then youth commissioners could be reappointed for one additional year term. And that's, I'm reading from the Park and Recreation Commission ordinance, so we could fold all of that in to section, I think it's, one moment, 222-010, organization. Essentially, you'd add another paragraph importing all of that language in to this ordinance. So we could do it now, if you like, and I'm seeing nodding heads.
Well, I like it.
If you like, you can move the staff recommendation with those changes, but I see a hand raised.
Then how, how would we deal with my request that it's not just someone who has general interest in art, but that it's a combination of interest in technical skills?
Well, right now, the way the ordinance is drafted is it says the council will prioritize applicants, appointing applicants who display an interest in and appreciation of art, architecture, local business, or the broader art community. So I think it's, it's fairly broad, and those criteria could apply to youth commissioners as well. Were you suggesting changing that criteria?
What I want to make sure, and if it can be done within that, I'm fine, is I don't want five people on the commission who are art enthusiasts but have no technical backgrounds. I think we need to have a mix of community members who are interested in people, like on the committee right now, there's an architect requirement, there's a this, there's a that. So it cannot be accommodated.
So that's a whole different setup, if that's what you want to do right now. This is very broad overall, so you as a council can decide when you do make your appointments, what might fit the box, and be strategic about who you want to appoint. Alternatively, you'd have to then set up for each one of the, similar to what you just had previously.
I don't want to do that, but I just want to make sure that, that we, if we're giving this commission the kind of horsepower we want to, that we have a mix of people who are on the commission who can live up to that horsepower.
And that would be up to the council, so it's broad enough to include, you know, different backgrounds. It would be up to the council when you are deciding who you want to appoint, what that makeup of that commission looks like, with what expertise or what type of background or lived experiences they might have in their approach.
Okay.
I just wanted to say that I'm in, more in favor of keeping it broad and just leaving it, the appointment powers to the council than specifying and career or life experience or something like that.
Sure. And when we actually promote the, the appointment cycle, when we are promoting it, we can actually put that into the description, you know? Ideally, candidates would, some of the candidates will have experience in these different things. We'd do that in other.
Yep.
Okay, so do we have a motion? We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? Could we please call roll? Thank you.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmembers Shrek Goditski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
All right. Well, with that, we will move on to reports and announcements. Do we have any council or staff that would like to do some reports and announcements? Okay, councilmembers, Shrek Goditski will go first.
I just wanted to remind, I believe it is next Monday is the last community meeting about Humboldt. That is at the Fiesta Garden School. So please attend if you have concerns or comments or thoughts about the bike lane. I also did want to follow up about a public comment that was made tonight about the letter for e-bikes. So my understanding at the last council meeting was that we were getting on board with what Burlingame had already established, which was better best practices and educational opportunities for e-bikes, and that Nicole was crafting a letter around this. So I guess I'm confused by the comment and the concern that there's no community input. Do you have any thoughts on this?
Am I allowed to address the council member directly, or do I?
Remember, like all in reports and announcements, if you have a brief comment and have a brief response, that's, that's fine, but I would, I would keep it, I would keep it short.
Yes. So my understanding from what I was, my understanding from the action that was taken when the council approved it, is that I was empowered to write the letter on behalf of the council and speak on behalf of the council. And so I did craft a letter with Mayor Jimenez of Foster City, which was submitted to staff.
And it is still under review, so we're getting comments from our own staff team just to make sure, to see if we can deliver on what the, what the breadth of the letter has stated. So that's something that, we have not put anything on City Letterhead. So when you, we had the public comments saying that they've seen a letter from the city, there's been no letter from the city of San Mateo. Maybe it's Foster City, but not San Mateo at this moment.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to confirm that it's still being reviewed by city staff, not on City Letterhead yet. Thank you.
Nicole, do you have anything?
They don't call me New Business Nicole for nothing. So just a couple of things. I did want to follow up on Ms. McQueen Felder's comment about the Safe Runster School report. Do we have any information that you could share to me, with me? I think that preceded Danielle and my time on council.
So I'll go ahead and I'll follow up with our public work staff. To my knowledge, it's a funded half-time, part-time position, so I'll go ahead. I know our Transportation Division is looking at restructuring overall, and so I know that they're trying to be strategic overall with the staffing positions, so I'll go ahead and I'll follow up, and I'll get you guys an update and your weekly updates.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I also wanted to just provide a brief update in partnership with the mayor. Mayor Newsom and I were excited to attend CAL Cities, the California, what's it, CAL, California Association of Cities?
CAL Cities.
CAL Cities, League of, League of California Cities in Long Beach. And I just want to encourage any of my colleagues who may think about going to CAL Cities in the future. It was really great to network with our colleagues, learn about great projects that are happening up and down, talk about, we're all kind of facing very similar challenges with budgetary constraints. talk about, we're all kind of facing very similar challenges with budgetary constraints and other things like that. So there was a lot to take away from and a lot of knowledge sharing. So I just really, I really enjoyed that. I also just wanted to call out the fact that, I didn't know this, but we have a chess grandmaster who was from San Mateo, was from San Mateo, Daniel Noroditsky, 29-year-old who was born in San Mateo and graduated from Crystal Springs Upland. And unfortunately, he passed away today at the age of 29. So roots here in San Mateo. He, looks like he was active with a chess center out of Burlingame, or not Burlingame, sorry, Georgia, and graduated from Stanford. So I just wanted to convey our condolences to the Noroditsky family and hope that maybe we could close today's meeting in his honor.
I would be thankful to that. Thank you. Anything else? The only other thing I know of is this Sunday is Booze and Brewze on B Street. So for the last few years, I've been saying it's Booze, B-O-O-S. But this year, it'll actually be O-O-S and B-O-Z-E. Booze and Brewze on B Street this Sunday. Bring out your kids. It's a great event. And with that, we can adjourn in the memory. Can you read for me?
Close session. We do have close session, but yes, and do we, so we do that when we get back?
We, the meeting is not yet adjourned. The council will move to close session at this time.
Okay.
So can we close the meeting in their, in their name now so that it's on record?
Sure.
All right, so we'll do that.
Great. So I move that we close the meeting in honor of chess grandmaster, Daniel Noroditsky, who unfortunately passed away today. And we hope we send love and condolences to his family.
Thank you. And we'll observe a moment of silence. Okay, and with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you, everyone.